And I'd like you to know that this is my first meeting as the new Chair of the Planning Commission for the next two years, so bear with me if I don't stumble too bad today. Approval of the order of agenda. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second? Didn't hear. This is just a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of the regular meeting of June 4th. Have you had a chance to look through those?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There'll be no brown bag lunch in July. We'll see what we do for August. Okay. Moving on to the public hearing items. Item number one, the conditional use permit to allow for non-farm commercial uses in an agricultural zoning district has been continued to October 1st. If anybody is here on that item, that will be continued to October. Moving on to item number two, continued hearing on the application requesting an alley vacation of the alley between Lot 12, Block 26, and a part of Lot 7, and all of lots 8 through 12, Block 25, Robert's 2nd Edition. Donald Crest, please.
Pardon me, Commissioners, I was imagining this was gonna be rolling here. I'll have this for in a second. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Donald Crest, Department of Planning and Development. Sorry for the brief technical delay here. As the Chairman stated, our first item here is a vacation of alleyway and the Robert's 2nd Edition. This area is zoned, the purple here is zoned DMU, downtown mixed-use. This is the location map here. This is the former, the Nestor Bar, and this is Park Company Real Estate Company. This is NP Avenue here, 10th Street here. The area proposed to be vacated is just this portion of the T Alley at this time. Again, just a fairly straightforward alley vacation. This is what that looks like on the ground. The pictures went over so well last time, we're gonna try it again here. This is standing at the west end of what's gonna be vacated, so you're looking toward 10th Street here. This is the Nestor, the old Nestor. Here you're across the street, across 10th Street, standing in the Jiffy Lube parking lot there, looking back at the full length of the alley, and then as we saw in the previous photograph, the alley tees, and so this is the north-south part of the alley. This building here is the Johnson Law Firm, not our city attorney, Johnson, but Leslie Johnson Aldrich's office. She submitted a comment letter, that we'll get back to that in a little bit here. This is the vacation plat, again showing the location of the vacated area. The only consideration that we have here, as noted in your staff report, the LDC, our Land Development Code, does not have any specification for vacation of right-of-way. We use the North Dakota Century Code findings, which are stated in your staff report. One of the things it requires is that any utility should be accounted for before a vacation is complete. And so the applicant, who has been working with our city engineer's office to develop that and list it in your packet, there are some comments from engineering on page one about the applicant will provide a plan showing sewer elevation, so on, and they will do that and continue to work through that, and will have that done before the plat goes to City Commission. So they are in process on that. And as noted, there was a letter there included from Leslie Johnson Aldrich, who owns that law office there and the converted house. She's been there for some years. She, in addition to her comments in the letter, she, I had a phone conversation for her today, she's in court this afternoon, is not able to attend, but she just wanted to add a couple of other comments there that there was, and I took a couple pictures of this too. This is, this is her office here, and this is their parking area, and they only have access from the alley. This part of the alley isn't being vacated, but she's just, you know, concerned is, about this block. And then this is the parking in front of her, there's the sign for her office there, and this is, this is the parking situation. There's all four-hour parking, but then, right in front of it, there's no parking. She commented that when First Avenue North was converted from a two-way, or one-way to a two-way, she believes she lost some parking out in front. There, as you know, NDSU is very, very well entrenched downtown, and the students, apparently some take the bus, but a lot of them still drive, and they take up some parking, and there is, there's not even, she says parking that you can find to buy, to lease out or buy extra parking off-site for her, and, you know, she's also concerned about the density of the proposed future project that Kilborn will be constructing here. And she also had a suggestion that 11th Street, which I believe in the future is scheduled to be to redevelop, be redeveloped with diagonal parking. So she just wanted to get that suggestion out there. So the applicant's representative, Mike Zimny of the Kilborn Group, and Brian Patengale, the engineer from Houston Engineering, are with us this afternoon, may wish to address the commission. Otherwise, the recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Donald?
Thanks for the presentation, Donald. I guess I just have one question. Are we expecting other action to be requested of us on this property as redevelopment goes forward?
Commissioner Schneider, perhaps Mr. Zimny could address that question. I don't know what he's got in mind there exactly.
Okay, I'll wait for...
Any other quick questions for Donald?
The floor is yours. Thank you. Mike Zimny, Kilborn Group, owner representative. I'm not anticipating any other requests. The property's already zoned DMU. We have an RZ application in, that was reviewed by the RZ Authority, so I'm not anticipating any other requests via the Planning Commission Board.
Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Zimny?
Mike, can you just, what is going on this property, and will there be any parking on this facility that perhaps the Johnson Law Firm could rent a few spaces?
The current proposal is we would have 160 units on the site. It'd be two phases, the Nestor site being Phase 1, and then the Park Company property being Phase 2. A total of 230 parking stalls. Some of those are underground, some are first-floor parking, and then some are exterior parking on the backside of the building along the north-south alley. Our staff has talked with the, with Ms. Johnson, and one of the options we've said we'll keep on the table is some type of maybe potential shared parking agreement on that surface parking lot.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Commissioners? Okay, I'll open it up to the public for comment. Anybody in the audience want to speak to this, for or against? Don't everybody stand up. Seen no comment, I'll close the public comment. Any additional discussion from the Commissioners? Are we ready to act?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer the motion as included in the staff report.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll call a roll-call vote.
McGilkey?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Sobelik?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Tassa?
Aye.
Gunkelman?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Item number 3A and 3B have been continued to August 6th. A zoning change from GC, General Commercial, to Limited Industrial, proposed on Lot 1, Block 1, MBA Investments Edition, so that's been moved. If there's anybody here with that today, it's been moved to August. All right. Item number 4, hearing on the application requesting a plat of Blue Water Creek Edition 5th Edition, minor subdivision, a replat of Lot 2, Block 1, Blue Water Creek 4th Edition to the City of Fargo, Cass County, North Dakota, including a vacation of a right-of-way at the northeast corner of the intersection of 47th Street South and 32nd Avenue South. Donald Crest, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. Again, this is the Blue Water Creek area. We've, over the last few months and years, we've had quite a bit of action on the Blue Water Creek area here. You may recall, recently, you, your commission recommended approval for a zone change from LC to GC, so that has now happened. This is, would be now red. I didn't update the map this morning here in light of the City Commission's decision there, but this is now red. This is now general commercial. So that's, your recommendation was followed by the City Commission, and they agreed with your recommendation. And the surrounding zoning is still limited commercial. Again, this is a location here, 32nd Avenue South, 45th Street South, 33rd Avenue, and 47th Avenue here. This is the right-of-way for a roundabout that is no longer going to be developed there. As you see, there's, the sidewalk is already, is already there, so there's, there's not a big, you know, just asphalt blank there. It's already developed there. Again, some site photos there. Here you're standing, that's the part of the right-of-way that's gonna get vacated and go back to the applicant inside those two sidewalks. Here you're looking northeast. As you see, the applicant's been doing some site work there. He has to lomer those, that area to get it out of the floodplain, so that's the work he's been doing there. Here you're, you're looking, you're at the opposite corner now, there's that ring road that goes around the property. This, this is a private road that goes around the property here. And this is, standing on the corner of that and 33rd, looking up here, here's the high-tech car wash up there, and as you see, all but one of the properties along 32nd is now being developed. And then this is an area where we'll talk about in a minute. In addition to the zone change that was, has been approved in the plat that's before you today, the applicant also has in a building permit request to build an office building on what will be this lot up here. And so that's right along the ring road there. Looking at the plat itself, the plat proposes six lots. This lot here, Lot 3, is gonna propose to be a four-story office building that will be the headquarters for Paces Lodging and some other facilities. Is that correct? You see there's a detention basin in here, common detention basin in here, and five other lots, again, probably for similar office and commercial development. As you might recall from the zone change application that you reviewed the last time, there were some limitations on that with the existing conditional overlay, so that some of those heavier uses in commercial, off-premise signs, adult entertainment, some of the conditional uses such as industrial could not happen here because they're restricted by the, the conditional overlay. Additionally, that conditional overlay has a number of design standards in it that relate to building facades and landscaping in particular, having to do with pedestrian and vehicular connectivity, having a separate vehicular and pedestrian connectivity system within the development, and, as well as landscaping. So you, as you saw on the, on the photos there, there is, you know, you look at this, and this, it's a, you know, paved area, there's a sidewalk, there's a berm along that side, so it's not just a asphalt paved trail in there. It's, you know, it's a, similar to a street. It's not the full width of a public street, but it's similar to a public street. And so again, the applicant has proposed the plat here, in fairly straightforward, and the applicant, Nate Bollmuth, from Paces Lodging, is with us this afternoon here. The recommendation is on the screen. You'll just note one thing, Commissioners, it's slightly different than the one in the staff report, even though the one in the staff report does note, including a vacation or right-of-way, we added, and the standards of Chapter 439 of the North Dakota Century Code, just to be thorough, we just added that to the recommendation. Doesn't change the nature of the recommendation, just makes it a little more detailed. So if you would make a motion to approve, we should probably use the one on the screen. Thank you, Commissioners. That concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions, Commissioners, for Donald on this? Seen no questions. Nate, you got any comments? Any questions for Nate? Seen no questions. Open it up to public comment. Anybody from the audience who wish to speak for or against this? God, you're making my meeting easy today. Okay, I'll close public comment. Any additional discussion, or are we ready to act? Commissioner Schneider?
I'll make the motion to accept the findings and recommendations staff has outlined on the screen.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, roll-call vote. All right, all in, well, roll-call vote.
Fisher?
Aye.
Sobelik?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
McGilkey?
Aye.
Tassa?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Gunkelman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Moving on to item number 5 on the agenda, the hearing on the application of a zoning request, of, application requesting a zoning change from LC Limited Commercial to MR3 Multiple-Dwelling Residential on a portion of Lot 2, Block 1, 42nd Street Edition located at 3,742nd Street South. Megan, please. Tell us what's going on.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. As Chair Gunkelman noted, the item 5 is an application for a zoning change from LC Limited Commercial to MR3 Multi-Dwelling Residential on a portion of Lot 2, Block 1, 42nd Street South. 42nd Street Edition at 3,742nd Street South, you'll see here, 42nd Street, here's the subject property. Directly north is multi-MR3 zoning. Applicant Stacy Holmes with LJA is here, should you have any questions. Application is for the zone change from LC to MR3. There is an existing conditional use permit from 2001 that was approved on the property to allow residential use in the Limited Commercial Zoning District, which included conditions such as dimensional standards, design standards, and established a site layout. The property owner is planning to add an additional structure on the site, which is different than the approved site layout, and is therefore proposing a zoning change to construct within the MR3 zoning district. Note that if the C, if the zoning change is approved, the CUP no longer applies to the site. Here's an aerial image of what the site looks like today, and some perspective images or photos that were taken. This image on the left is from 42nd Street facing east, and the image on the right is at the southwest corner of the property facing northeast into the property, shows the area where the applicant is proposing to build. Staff has not received any inquiries on the application, and staff finds that all criteria are met and are recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Commissioners, for Megan? This is really easy today. Okay, hearing no questions. Invite the applicant to speak if they would wish. Any questions for the applicant? All right, hearing no questions. Open it up to public comment. Anybody from the audience wants to speak for or against this? Boy, everybody wants to get to the lakes or someplace today. Okay, I'll close the public comment period. Any additional discussion, Commissioners, or are we ready to act?
I just have a quick question. Megan, with the change, does the building as it sits now fit into the MR3 zoning?
The proposed building?
No, the one that's currently there. Isn't there a building on that site right now? Does it fit within MR3?
Yes, currently it does, and, and if the zoning change was approved, a building permit would be applied, and it would ensure that, that the whole development would meet requirements of the MR3 zoning district.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion as outlined in our packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner McGilkey is second. Any further discussion? Roll-call vote, please. Any other questions, Commissioners? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion as outlined in our packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner McGilkey is second. Any further discussion? Roll-call vote, please.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
McGilkey?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Sobelik?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Tassa?
Aye.
Gunkelman?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item 6 on our agenda, hearing on application requesting a conditional use permit to allow for an alternative access plan, the General Commercial Zoning District on a portion of Lot 1, and all of lots 2 through 9, and the adjacent property Block 1, Reeves Edition located at 602 University Drive North.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Item number 6 on your agenda is titled Reeves Edition. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for an alternative access plan to allow a parking reduction in the GC, General Commercial Zoning District, and it's currently located at 602 University Drive North, which is the existing Fargo Brewing Building, so this corner property. The applicant, Lee Schwartz, is here, along with Architect Mike Dawson and members of Fargo Brewing. The specific intent of the request is to reduce the number of parking stalls required on-site. The owner is proposing a number of interior changes, which would include a relocation of the manufacturing and production inside the existing building, the addition of retail sales and services and restaurant uses, and the addition of a small concert venue inside the existing building at 602 University Drive. The applicant proposes that 49 parking stalls will be provided on-site at 602 University Drive, and that an additional 92 parking stalls have been secured at 1403 University, which is here, or at 1403 7th Avenue North, through a parking agreement with Sanford. So to date, staff has received one letter of opposition from Spartan Nash citing concerns of Fargo Brewing Partners, or Fargo Brewing patrons parking in the Family Fair parking lot, which is here, directly across the street. There are also some photos that give you perspective. This is the Family Fair parking lot, and this is the view, these two photos give a view of the Sanford North parking lot as it's located to Fargo Brewing, and that distance is about 550 feet from the proposed 92 shared parking spots. As outlined in the staff report, staff finds that the proposed CUP is consistent with the applicable review criteria, and staff has recommended some additional conditions of the approval that are pretty typical in cases of alternative access, including bicycle parking at the facility, and that any expansion of uses would trigger a reevaluation of off-street parking requirements. I can answer any questions if you have them.
I'd also like to welcome Maggie today, too. Thank you. Good to see you. Any questions for her?
Maggie, just a question. As it is right now, they would need 70 parking spots on-site, and they currently have 49. That's correct?
Commissioner Schneider?
Maggie, I just have one question. With the parking across the street, where is the nearest crosswalk?
So Jeremy Gordon in Engineering kind of addressed this. The nearest crosswalk, I believe, would be towards University Drive, but based on the report from our traffic engineer, he states that there should be sufficient gaps in the traffic flow for pedestrians to cross 7th Avenue North safely, since attendance at the brewery will primarily be after peak PM rush hours, and since patrons will be 21 years of age or older.
I have a question.
Commissioner Morgan?
How many parking spots are there over at Sanford's location?
According to the architect, they've acquired 92 through a parking agreement, and they can adjust it to acquire more.
How many parking spaces is the organization actually seeking if they're thinking about future growth?
I think that's a question I would maybe defer to either Lee Schwartz or Mike Dawson.
Thank you.
The applicant would like to stand up and...
Good afternoon, I'm Lee Schwartz, I'm the project manager for the Fargo Brewing Project, and this is Mike Dawson with Chris Holliday Architects.
Hello. I'd just like to actually clarify, if I may. We've, since, since this has gone through, we've had a, as part of the permit process, we've had the site surveyed, and we're working with the civil engineer on dialing in the existing parking on-site, and I spoke with him this morning, actually, and we should be actually closer to 60 spots due to a discrepancy between some of the GIS mapping and actual survey. The recorded survey is kind of giving us more room, which essentially is gonna give us more spots, so we're gonna be above 49, closer to 60.
And is the, the parking agreement you have in place with, you've secured with Sanford and the, and the parking you anticipate will be available, is that gonna be sufficient for the events? Or how will, how will future growth impact the concerns that Spartan Nash cited?
Well, there's a couple things to speak to there. First, the event that are going on inside the building, so we're talking about, what, six months of the year, are only about 300-person events, so not much larger than you would have on a busy Saturday, anyway. The events that we have in summertime, parking lot events, those things going on now, we, that agreement with Sanford is in place infinitely, I guess, as far as things go now, but the, I'm sorry, what's the question name was again?
Well, is the current parking that you have secured and what you're going to be able to provide on your, on the property, is that gonna be sufficient for the events?
Yeah, we're not adding a whole lot of capacity in terms of the amount of people that will be attending events. The capacity we have now with the existing lot and with the Sanford lot is already being used. We've already been doing these events for two or three or more years, so everything is, is in place, has been in place, it's just more formal now than it used to be.
Could I ask a question? So how many additional parking spaces are there over at Sanford?
Well, as, as mentioned, there's 92 to find, and actually, if you look at the north side of that building, there's several more. We have access to the entire lot. The south, for lack of a better term, square there is what we have, is what we've been using, but the agreement we have with Sanford allows us to use that entire parking lot.
Is that a financial agreement?
I don't believe there was any consideration other than insurance coverage.
Thank you.
One question I might have would be, quite often during the summer, you have a tent set up in the parking lot, so you'll lose some parking spots, or is that tent arrangement kind of in the middle of everything?
It's not a tent. We've, there's been some misconceptions about this. It's, it's a stage cover, is all it is. The stage cover is on wheels, it's not permanent at all, and it is only sitting there now because of the wind damage we had the other day, it's being repaired. Now it's just sitting in the middle of the parking lot. In almost every other case, it is slid off to the very end, basically the end of the triangle there, where we park vehicles, et cetera, anyway. So that's not taking up any parking spaces, and it's not a permanent structure of any kind.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant?
I have another question. Does the Family Fair parent company, Nash, do they have plans for that space to the south of their building?
I believe they're here to speak to that, if you'd like to ask them. We are not aware of any plans that they have for that parking lot for expansion or different use.
Okay, I'm interested in that because it is a, they have quite a bit of parking to the east of their building, and it seems to be more than sufficient for the shoppers that are normally there. So I'm just thinking that at some point, there'll probably be some further use of that parking area to the south, because most of the time it's vacant.
Hello, I'm Dave Ilk, and I represent Spartan Nash.
Hello, I'm, uh, Dave Ilk, and I represent, uh, Spartan Nash, that location. Uh, actually, part of the south lot is not parking. It is, uh, for our trucks to, uh, enter and leave, uh, unloading, um, you know, about, oh, we get, uh, our normal DC loads three to four times a week. Uh, it can range anywhere from, uh, um, small trailers to, uh, fifty-two-foot trailers. Uh, so I would say a quarter, a third of that is just for deliveries.
So, the deliveries are made to the west side of the building, is that right?
Uh, to the south side.
Oh, I'm, I was just, had never noticed there were any big doors there.
Uh, well, there is one loading door, uh, for semis, uh, loading dock on that side. And then, uh, there's also a, uh, ground-level door for smaller, uh, deliveries, uh, direct store deliveries like, uh, the bread companies or, uh, pop, or chip companies.
Okay, and just one more question. Do you have any, uh, well, there are, there is recycling there, too, that the city much lease, must lease space from you?
Uh, we let them just, uh, put the recycling bins there, yeah.
Yeah, and then, so is there any further idea about what you might do with the remaining space to the south?
Uh, well, we've had, we have a few customers that park there, and that's where our associates park.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, um, I'll open up the public comment, I guess, which I've kind of done. Any other questions from the public, for or against? All right, I'll close the public comment. Uh, any additional discussion, Commissioners? Are we ready to act?
Question for you gentlemen, um, have you noticed your, uh, customers parking in that Family Fair lot? Or has that been a, an issue in the, in the past, or is it just coming about with this proposed expansion?
So, it's by understanding that we, uh, up until maybe just like the start of the summer, there was no, we, there was no, uh, enforcement by, uh, Family Fair of that parking lot. We, our, our, uh, the Fargo Brewing customers were allowed to park there with some kind of verbal agreement, I believe they had. So, that has changed. And now, it's clear that they do not want Fargo Brewing customers parking in that lot on any day event or otherwise. And so, that's, it's basically, it's a new rule. We put up signs, we have thoroughly used social media, sending out maps of where, exactly where you can park and exactly where you can't park. And we have done our best to enforce it, but we're running into, this is a new rule. So, we have customers that come to the brewery just two or three times a year, and then some of those people are not knowing what the new rule is, parking across the street. So, we're still working through those issues, but we're, we're trying to be very diligent about policing it ourselves in addition to what, uh, Family Fair is doing in terms of signage, et cetera.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Are we ready to act?
Chairman, I have a question, and maybe this is for Maggie. Um, at what point would there be enough pedestrian traffic where we would put a pedestrian sign or a crosswalk at all? I am a little concerned about, um, you know, people visiting the brewery and then walking across a busy street to get back to their car.
Um, that's actually a question that I would choose to defer to Brenna Derrick.
Um, when we did review it, that's one of the questions, we had Jeremy take a look at it, Jeremy reached out and visited with them. And at this point, right now, he was very comfortable with not putting any pedestrians signing up just due to the time that they're going to be there and the low-volume traffic at that time. And so, it's something we would monitor, and if, if it would grow and the attendance would get higher, then we would have to reevaluate it. I think the idea was, is they would cross at that T-intersection, not go all the way over, but at that T-intersection, they would probably be crossing. And at this point, he, he's comfortable with, um, the numbers and what we would see in the time that they would be doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Schneider.
Well, I think it's a good use to maximize the parking lots while it's not being used instead of creating more parking lots. And so, I'm going to make the motion recommended by staff on screen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Fisher.
Aye.
Sobelik.
Aye.
Holtz.
Aye.
Bachmeier.
Aye.
Tassa.
Aye.
McGilkey.
Aye.
Morgan.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Gunkelmann.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item seven. Hearing on the application requesting a conditional use permit to allow residential living in the G C, General Commercial Zoning District on portions of Lot Six, Seven, and Nine, Block Four, Interstate Park Edition. Mr. Kress.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, this is the area we're looking at here. It's zone general commercial, this is Interstate Boulevard, Thirty-Sixth Street South. Uh, I twenty-nine is right over here, when we get to the map, we'll see where this is. This is the Super Eight Motel, uh, and this is another part of it, which was up until recently, a long-term stay hotel. But the applicant has gone through a process with, in inspections and fire, to meet a, uh, billing code and fare code, to convert those hotel rooms into apartments. And so, doing so, he is, uh, now that he has apartments, he's in the general commercial zone. So, he would need a conditional use permit to have, as you read there, Chairman Gunkelmann, a, uh, to have residential household living, uh, residential living in the general commercial zone. So, this is actually on a separate lot than the Super Eight, as you see here. Uh, the Super Eight continues to be a hotel. And here's, uh, this is the south side of it, you see all the individual meter bays for the twenty-five units that are there. Out in front, you see this is the front of the building that is the west side, and the parking area there in that large parking lot. Here, they do have sufficient spaces at the standard rate for apartments, two-point-two-five spaces per unit. They do have sufficient parking there, um, for that, even though they're still sharing some with the Super Eight. Or the, the Super Eight is also on that lot, but there's enough parking to go around between them there. And then, this is, uh, this is standing actually on the West Acres Bowl, adjacent property. And you'll see that south side is, is blank there, and then this is just the back of the, of the lot. Just a little historical note here for you. That building is built right up to the lot line because when it was built, it was built in the, under the nineteen-sixty-five zoning ordinance, which had no setbacks for C-two, no side yard setbacks for C-two. So, that's why that building looks like that, that it can stay there. Uh, this is the site plan here, again, showing the building and the parking. This is the plan of the actual building itself, showing the units. These are provided by the applicant here. The, uh, this again is a conditional use permit, so it ends at your commission, doesn't go to the city commission. Uh, the property owner, Kevin Hall, and the prop, uh, project representative, David Glessner, are with us this afternoon and may wish to address the commission. Also, I'd like to note that, uh, this case was largely prepared by Luke Mormon in our office. Luke was not able to be here today, so I'm, I'm pinch hitting for Luke here. So, I want to make sure he gets credit for the, uh, work he's done here. We do have one condition on this CUP, which would have to do with the density. So, uh, we try to keep the density limited to less, the, the MR-three zoning density or less, which is twenty-four units per acre. Here, it's eighteen units per acre, which we took, got by just dividing the existing number of units by the area of the lot. And that's, that's the density they've got. So, this CUP does limit them to just keeping that building there and not saying, you know, oh, we can just, you know, add other multifamily buildings. They, they can't beat that density. Um, they have to come back to your commission for further zone changing or conditional use permit for that. So, that concludes, uh, staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Any questions for Donald? See none. Uh, I'd like the applicant to speak if they would like to. I get to welcome him to the stage because he's my, uh, he grew up in the house next to me, so it's...
As long as you don't say I look like, like my dad.
Uh, no, no.
I'm Dave Glessner, and I'm here with the owner, Kevin Hall. I just want to thank Donald, but I want, just a quick clarification that the property is still being operated as a long-term stay hotel. And the owner would like to operate it as a affordable apartment complex. And it's prepared for that, but that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Any, any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Um, what is your proposed demographic for, um, the apartments? I'm just interested because...
I'm not sure if we know that.
Okay, I'm just interested because it's in such a, a commercial district. It seems like people who might want to live there would be someone associated with work possibly. But then, um, other people would look for an apartment that would have more amenities in terms of not necessarily commercial, but would have some green space and some landscaping and some other things that would go along with the building to make it, you know, more appealing in terms of, of residents. Um, are those aspects taken into consideration?
I'm going to defer.
I'm, I'm Kevin Hall, the property owner. And, uh, it, it, as far as the demographic, it is all set up as one-bedroom units, so it's more of a, a younger professional type of demographic. They are lower cost, uh, so that, so that it, it can, uh, meet a lower, uh, lower income-type need. The property abuts with the bowling alley and, and the, to the, I guess it would be to the east. Um, what you can see in the picture, it doesn't show it really well, but it, it was a very large parking lot that the bowling alley had. They have paved, they don't pave up to the building anymore, and it's deteriorated. I am trying to negotiate purchasing it to put more green space next to it, but it's not my property in, until I can acquire it. Um, so that it would look better from the south view, you can see how, how deteriorated in the bottom left-hand that, that, uh, parking lot is that my neighbor has, that we'd like to do that and, and add the green space. If I can get that accomplished, I will.
Are there any, uh, requirements by the planning staff for those kind of amenities?
Uh, I don't believe so because I believe the property we have met all their requirements, but, but I guess they could speak to it.
Uh, it's a, because the building is, is already there in that location, it is, it'd follow our standard practice that since they're not actually enlarging the building, uh, they, i- if they enlarge the building, then there would be some, past a certain point, there would be some requirement for, as you say, additional landscaping and other, and some other things. But they, they aren't enlarging the building, so that's how we treat those existing buildings, ma'am.
Thanks, and one more question, uh, if you don't mind. Um, what is, what's the average rent for those one-bedrooms?
Um, it, there's about, um, eighteen of them that are a little smaller that are going to be in the about five-fifty range. Um, then there's ones on the end that are going to be closer to seven-hundred. And, and that covers rent, parking, and, and all the utility costs.
Thank you.
Me, I had one other comment, you, you, speaking of amenities. Uh, just to the, to the south on the same interchange, if you look at the layout of hotels to apartments to a grocery store, uh, this, this is not, um, this is very similar with the hotel buffering from the highway to an apartment to a bowling alley, and, and there's actually four restaurants easily within walking distance. There's a Perkins, there's a Burger King, there's a Sickies, I mean, all right, right there. Um, so, i- yes, it's in general commercial, but it, it's, it's surrounded by office and apartment buildings and, and other living quarters. I guess there's the Mexican place, too, right there, A- Acapulco.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, we'll open it up to public, to public comment. Anybody from the audience we wish to speak for or against? See nothing, I'll close the public comment. Um, any further discussion, Commissioners? Are we ready to act?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right.
I'll second it.
Okay, you second, okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve it as, um, let's see, as, uh, recommended by the planning department.
Have a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Holtz.
Aye.
Sobelik.
Aye.
McGilkey.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Morgan.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Tassa.
Aye.
Bachmeier.
Aye.
Gunkelmann.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Motion carries. Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to Jim Gilmore on alley reconstruction of Robert's Street Alley.
This is a plan that would, um, facilitate the burying and relocation of power lines and telecommunications lines along Robert's Alley from Fourth Avenue North down to, uh, First Avenue North. The, um, the, the plan includes, uh, lowering the power lines, the telecommunications lines, and reconstruction of the alley. The alley actually north of Second Avenue, between Second Avenue and Fourth Avenue, I believe most of that's been reconstructed already. Um, and so, the, this, rest of this year, uh, they would reconstruct the alley, uh, from Second Avenue down to First Avenue. The, um, the, the reasons for these alley reconstructions are really threefold. Uh, first of all, I think it'll, it's been encouraging more businesses to locate in the alley, uh, make the alley more attractive to pedestrians. Secondly, removing those overhead power lines are, uh, considered blighted, uh, they're not that, uh, nice to look at. And secondly, or finally, uh, thirdly, it really allows the reconstruction of some new buildings in that vicinity. There's a proposed project called, uh, the Kessler Building. It'll be located between, um, First Avenue North and Second Avenue, filling in that parking lot area. Because those power lines are so close to the building, it makes it impractical to kind of build there very efficiently. If you've no, ever noticed on Roco, you'll see where they haven't finished the siding on one portion of the building. That's because the power lines are in such close proximity to the building, uh, that they can't get the siding on that building. And so, they're trying to get the power lines, uh, either de-powered or, uh, so they can get it on there at least temporarily. But in the long-term, uh, lower those power lines. So, we get more redevelopment if the power lines are, are not in the way. The, uh, city's been working with, uh, property owners on the, on the blocks to, uh, to accomplish this project. Uh, involves, uh, reconstructing the alley. Under the alley, then there'd be conduit put in so that the power lines and telecommunications lines can be moved underground. And then, one of the more challenging things is, uh, connecting all these buildings with power again. When your power comes in overhead and now you're going to move it, uh, at grade, um, it means people have to move service panels, uh, change some interior, um, uh, wiring. And so, in order for the city to assist with this type of, uh, work, uh, we need to use our urban renewal powers. So, as you look at the Centricode, there's all sorts of things the city can do. Well, using your urban renewal powers, it allows us to, uh, assist with, uh, uh, lowering and recon, connection of all these, uh, businesses to the, uh, electric system. So, in order to use those urban renewal pow, powers, you need an urban renewal plan. And so, this is the plan, uh, for you today. So, the, the plan simply allows the implementation of these things that are, are planned. Uh, the, is, with other re, renewal plans or TIF districts, the Centricode requires us to consult with the planning commission, uh, to see if the plan is consistent with the overall, uh, plan of the city. In this case, our GO twenty thirty comprehensive plan. Uh, certainly more redevelopment downtown is consistent with, I think, all of our plans. And so, my recommendation to you is that you find that this particular plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan for the city and make that recommendation to city commission. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Sobelik.
Uh, Jim, I have a couple questions. Um, first, when would this start, the construction?
Brenda, do you want to address, uh, the timing on this?
Um, first, we need to complete the paving of the alley on the south side. And so, it would be either late this year that you'd start seeing some movement, but a lot of it will probably happen into next year.
And didn't they just repave this alley? I mean, and now if they're finishing the repaving, are they going to have to tear anything up again?
No, as part of the project, we installed the conduit.
Okay.
And so, that's already installed. There's a few areas that we have to, uh, remove and replace to allow the secondaries, but it's just a couple of patches on the south end. On the north end, we... On the north end, we were able to get all the conduit in, including the secondaries that will have to get into the buildings.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, that's the chunk between Second and Fourth that was done last year?
Correct, and then this part from First to Second, we're including the conduit again. And we've been working with the, the utility companies on locations for secondary, so we have all that conduit in.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Would you be able to speak to any anticipated or unanticipated impact to the tenants in that area? I noticed that there are a number of buildings that are owned or managed to be affordable housing. My concern is how, not, not only there, but everyone, all the, all the tenants who live in that area might be impacted by a project of this scope?
I believe the housing on that, that southern block is limited to what we kind of call the Gravey Alley. There's two alleys in that block, and that alley, I don't believe, is being reconstructed, at least for any major reconstruction. The alley to the north, there were some housing units there, and they had to work with, I believe it was 300 Broadway, where they just had to kind of go in from either the north or the south. So there were a lot of logistical challenges with that, as far as loading zones, you know, inconvenience for businesses and customers, but I believe they worked through it all in that northern part, and they're going to have to do the same on the southern part.
So do you anticipate any major disruption to the daily activities of the individuals who live there?
There's going to be disruptions, but we're going to have to adjust with loading zones. Anytime you reconstruct the street there, as you know, there are, you know, disruptions, and so it's a matter of figuring out where people can load and unload when that alley is torn up, because at some point in time, if people will not have access to the back of the property, they'll have to come in the front instead.
Any other questions? Commissioners, can I get a motion? Jim, how do you want this to, how do you want us to state this?
Just that you'd make a recommendation to the city commission that this renewal plan is consistent with the GO-2030 comprehensive plan of the city of Fargo.
I'll make the motion as Jim outlined.
Perfect, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. It's been moved and seconded, any, any other discussion? Do you want a roll call vote on this?
Yes, please.
Roll call vote, please.
Morgan?
Aye.
McGilkey?
Aye.
Holtz?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Sobelik?
Aye.
Tassa?
Aye.
Bachmeier?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Gunkelman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank Commissioner Fisher. I, I've had the opportunity over the last two years to get her, get to know her a little bit better. We've traveled to a couple planning conventions together, and it's always fun to get to know the people on the board and thank her for a great job in the last two years, and thank her for prodding me into this, so...
Thank you.
Again, thank you. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I thought you were going to make me stay. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.